Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of April 26, 2017. I hereby call this meeting to order and read our mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident, lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. We will, with the committee's permission, go off agenda and go to the public comment period. Is there anyone here who wishes to comment publicly about anything on the agenda or anything related to the Wakefield Public Schools? No, seeing none. All right. We do not have our student advisory council members here tonight, so we'll move to the consent agenda with a motion.
Move that the school committee approve the minutes of the March 28, 2017, meeting as presented.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Are there any questions about that March 28, the school committee meeting minutes?
Just that I'll be abstaining for absence.
Okay. All right. So noted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention.
There should be two.
It's coming on the off.
Great.
Yes.
Should be two abstentions.
Say that again.
If you're not here, you can't vote for it.
Yeah, okay, so yeah, one abstention and one absence, okay. All right, we'll return to the regular agenda and we'll start. So tonight after the election of April 25, the town election, is our reorganization meeting. So we'll start with a motion to elect a payroll signer. Is there a motion on the table?
Motion that Tom Markham be the payroll signer.
Okay, seconded. Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to nominate Tom Markham as our payroll signer. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Congratulations, Tom.
Thank you.
It's just the beginning. So now we'll go to the vice chairman. We have to elect a new vice chairman. Is there a motion to elect a new vice chair?
I nominate Tom Markham to be our vice chair.
Okay, seconded. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All right, we have a new vice chair.
Congratulations, Tom.
Congratulations, Tom.
Thank you.
And finally, we will have the election of a new chair. Is there a nomination for chairman?
I nominate Rob Tiro to be the chairperson of the Wakefield School Committee.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? All right, it's unanimous. We have a reorganized Wakefield School Committee. Thank you, everybody. Now the reorganization must translate into a reseating. There be a ceremonial passing of the gavel?
Just not aggressively. That's not Craig's nature.
All right, let's see. I guess I should take this.
Okay, and with that, my first comments as chairman, just to thank the committee for the trust that they've placed in me. This is something I obviously take extremely seriously. I consider myself very fortunate to have great working relationships with every member of the committee, and I trust that I will with our new member as well very shortly. And I trust, and I know that I'll continue to have a great relationship with the administration. So I do thank everybody for this display of trust. And with that, we can go on to Dr. Smith's portion.
Okay, so the first item is, we titled it "Girls in STEAM," something that we've been talking about for the last couple of years, is girls' interest and participation in science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. And so I'm very pleased to have a guest with us tonight, Wakefield Memorial High School student Jocelyn Murray, accompanied by her teacher, Ms. Doran. Come on up to the microphone. And Jocelyn's parents are here, mom and dad. And she has just, I'm just blown away by this story that you're about to hear. So I will turn it over to Jocelyn and Ms. Doran to tell you all about her experiences.
So recently, in the past months, we've been working on these Argonne National Laboratory's cyber defense puzzles as a part of our tech integration curriculum, which is a program offered in the school. Do we have the clicker?
Oh, the clicker.
So to solve the puzzles, we worked on it, the third puzzle, together in class. Now, these puzzles were originally found when Ms. Doran was looking for things to do in cybersecurity club, but unfortunately, in class, we're building a computer to show to the kids at the Woodville, and we got the wrong-sized motherboard, and it would not fit in the case. So we had to reorder that, and from there, we had a few classes in between the delivery of the motherboard. So we found that we could use these puzzles kind of to incorporate into our curriculum further. And the puzzles are released four months before the actual competition, which this year was the 1st of April, out at Argonne National Laboratories in Lamont, Illinois. And so the cyber defense competition itself is with five teams. So there's the blue team, which is a team of 15 colleges, all competing to protect basically a little infrastructure, which is four LEDs on a board and a water pump connected to a mini-computer, let's say. It could practically fit in an Altoids tenant, so small. And the red team is a team of actual ethical hackers that were assigned to attack the blue team's systems to see if the blue teams could keep the system up. And at the end of the competition, whoever had the most points from keeping their servers up and protecting it won the competition. Now, the blue, no, the white and green teams were for documentation, and we were on the pink team, which was kind of an introductory team to hacking. So we were three out of four high schoolers there, me, Samuel Millstone, and my brother, John Murray. And there was one other high school student from a high school in Chicago that the puzzle master, Jennifer Fowler, invited. And so we got to work using a penetration software called Cali Linux, and we were able to learn the ins and outs of a program called Armitage, which we used and the ethical hackers actually used. But the puzzles is actually what got us there, and today we'll be showing you Puzzle 3, which is called Metatoolium, taken from Latin. And so the original image up there is actually the puzzle. Now, the puzzle you're supposed to decode using cryptographic methods such as steganography, which is data hidden within, in an image, and you need to use programs to decode that. So to start out the puzzle, you have to see the code on the envelope. We had to scan that, and from that, it gave us an IMGA link, which is a popular picture-sharing software, and it gave us this image. Now, the whole puzzle was based off of Alice in Wonderland, because the idea of going down the rabbit hole was really what it was to introduce someone to computer science, because to do one thing, you may have to learn three things. Now, for this image, you can read the red text, but it won't give you much, but as you can see, there's blue text hidden under it. So if you take a red filter and put it on there, it will reveal the message in blue. The message in blue actually gives you another IMGA link. And that is the actual image that you have, and as you can see, the eyebrows are a string of code, mirrored, actually. And so when put through something called a rotary cipher, or a Caesar cipher, where different letters correspond to actual other letters that will decode a whole strand, and down in the corner, you can see that one link decodes to a DocDroid, and the other is the password. Now, DocDroid is kind of like Google Docs, but you need a password to access the document. From there, it gave us this image, which has a Dancing Men cipher and a passage from Alice in Wonderland in it. And so if you read the passage, you can slowly see that it's hinting at something when you reach the bottom, and the Dancing Men cipher that we found out after research is a cipher from Sherlock Holmes. And so we had to decode that, and it comes out as a password. And this right here is called a Rail Fence cipher, the one with the arrows. That took us ever so long to decode, because we were thinking, oh, we have to put it through this program, it'll decode it, but really, you just need to read up and down instead of across. So if you go further through, when reading the pass, the passage, you can see little letters highlighted in red throughout the whole thing. That decodes to another IMGA link, which gives this sort of white space image, which is used to overlay in text, and we did not originally realize this. So it took us about two classes to realize, until I stepped back and looked at the hints that the puzzle master actually gave us. And so when we decoded the DocDroid, it gave us basically a wall of text, and it was completely indecipherable. And it makes no sense if you read it, but if you overlay the white space, it comes out to a message, and it reads, "Go to the place where Sound meets Cloud and find the user who has the answer, handle 6 something or other," and it gives you a whole string of characters and numbers. SoundCloud is a popular audio-sharing software that many music artists use, and you can actually submit documents onto there. It's really easy to use, and so it gives you the link. I would open it, but unfortunately, you can't do this on there. And so what it did is it gave an audio file that practically sounded like German or gibberish, but when played backwards, it reveals a string of numbers from there, which decodes to another password. And it gave you the link to one of the Argonne National Laboratories, actual, it was a locked site, and it gave you a download to a file. And so once you downloaded the file, you needed to use the password to open the file, and it gave you this image. Now, originally thinking this was the answer, I submitted it, and Jennifer Fowler sent back, "There's still one more thing that you need to do, just look in plain sight." So if you take the original image and compare it to this, the only thing that's different is the message on the Mad Hatter's hat, which reads, "In this style, PW equals 10 over 6." Now, obviously, that means password equals 10 over 6, and when put through a program called Steghide, which is a steganography decoder, you finally have the final image. Now, this is one of four images, and the binary decodes to a quote from the Hacker Manifesto, which is, "This is our world now, the world of the electron and the switch," and it was really an introduction to the competition. And once I submitted this, Jennifer Fowler sent back, "Wow, you guys are at high school? You solved this? Why don't you come down, and you can join the competition?" Then Ms. Doran goes, "Isn't this a collegiate competition?" You know, we panicked a little, but then she said, "It's fine, you can join the pink team," which is basically an introductory team that gets to observe the red team. And that's really when our field trip started to get on the ground and get rolling. And so we tried to get all of Cybersecurity Club into it, but the cost was an issue, and of course, we ended up taking myself, Sam Millstone, and my brother to the competition. We got to listen to the keynote speaker, Devin Straight, who is the Assistant Deputy Secretary at Iser at the Department of Energy. And we also got to meet a senator from the 11th District of Chicago, who was a PhD physicist, which was enormously cool. We got to take basically a class in hacking, and it was just such an educational opportunity that not, not everyone gets, and it was just amazing. And as the result, I finished the steganographic piece, and we submitted it. I went on to solve the fourth puzzle without the class, and I got in trouble with some of the upperclassmen, because they wanted to solve it, but, because my brother said, "I'm going to swim practice, I'll help you with the puzzle when you get back," you know. Four hours later, he says, "I'm home and I'm ready to help." I, you know, look up from my computer, "I solved it." So it was immensely fun to do and just to get the experience, and you need to know nothing about cybersecurity. You basically need to know how to Google things, and you could solve this puzzle. And it's just so unique, because many people are so scared of the world of technology. It's just like, "I can't do this, let me call tech support." But Google is sitting right in front of you, and as my dad told me in the past, "It's the all-knowing oracle." And so that was really my introduction to cybersecurity, and so far, it's been my mission to, you know, get girls into the STEAM community. And so we started up the Cybersecurity Club, which is also the WMHS Girls Tech Club, and we're trying to get more girls into this. And we thought this was an amazing opportunity, and we would love to go back next year. And so we had a video, because they gave us actually a tour, and you could see everything. We got a tour of the First Particle Accelerator in North America, we got a tour of the Advanced Photon Source, which is used by researchers, basically as an X-ray machine, and we got a tour of the supercomputer they have there, which was huge. It had 40 terabytes of storage, and to give you a gauge, that's 40,000 terabytes, which is a lot of storage. And half of the time, it was always full, which was pretty amazing to know, but, and as a last part, we would like to thank our sponsor, because the Savings Bank actually gave us money to fund the trip, and so that's pretty much it.
Jocelyn is a sophomore at Wakefield Memorial High School. I should have probably said the beginning, as she competed with the college, it's like amazing.
Yeah, that's the last slide.
Oh, this is the last one?
Yeah. And then, we had one more quote that I believe Ms. Doran wanted to share with you.
I just wanted to let everybody know here that the cybersecurity is one of the fastest-growing careers. There's a definite need out there, there's jobs that are going unfulfilled right now. That's why this is kind of my passion, I want to make sure that the next generation is ready to defend the country. Devin Straight had said, "In 1903, the first plane flew, and then 40-plus years later, we had the United States Air Force." But we can't wait 40-plus years to have the cyber defense in place, so we need to start now, feet on the ground. Oh, and the other thing, to gain more interest for girls and minorities in technology, we just need to provide them more opportunities.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the committee? Ms. Callahan.
I'm just curious, like, this whole process between when you learned about Argonne and got to go to Chicago, was that six months, or?
It was about from, anywhere from, I think, late November, and then the competition was in April. Originally, Ms. Doran had posted the link on Classroom, and then I said, "Oh, this is an amazing opportunity, let me look at it." And I looked at the puzzle, and I was like, "Wow, I'll let us solve that in class." I didn't think it'd be as easy as it was once we started to learn, like, the ins and outs of the puzzle, and it was just really an amazing, amazing opportunity.
Actually, I think I started looking into the logistics of how we could get there in January, and the competition was April 1st.
So they really developed pretty quickly, is my point.
Yeah, it was a lot of work.
Congratulations on pulling it off in such a narrow timeframe, you know, it's not easy to do.
Yeah, we had more interest in going, but then we had conflicts with the senior show, so a lot of people dropped out. So hopefully, next year, we can plan for better and get more people to go, because I think it's an incredible opportunity for kids to...
Is it always in Chicago?
It's always at Argonne National Lab, yeah.
This is actually the second annual, so it's fairly new.
And just to see the National Lab is an incredible experience, and the closest one to us, I think, is in Long Island, New York. So, you know, this was a great opportunity.
Sounds great. Mr. Leos.
Thanks, Rob. So first, I want to just say thank you, you know, we, as, Kim, for bringing this to us at first. You know, as a school committee, we often are sort of a level above, we're talking about educational policy, and we're talking about budgets, and...
Right.
But when we can hear a student convey such passion for learning, like, this is what, this is why we're all here, really, and so, you know, it was a joy to listen to you walk through that experience with such, I mean, it was an intellectual adventure for you, right? That's what it sounded like, and you just, I mean, if you can convey that joy to your peers, I am sure that we will not have a problem recruiting girls to STEM and the kinds of things that you, that you clearly enjoy as a student. So just really thank you, and congratulations to Ms. Doran and your parents as well, because obviously, you didn't, you didn't get to this place without a lot of encouragement and support, so thanks.
No, her parents deserve a lot of credit.
Yeah.
That nanny really doesn't help me.
So you spoke so eloquently, Jocelyn, so you should be really proud of the way you're able to present your information. And I'm wondering a little bit about the opportunities that you're, that we need to provide, so obviously, these kinds of opportunities are helpful and necessary, but what kinds of groups or clubs or organizations are there, either in the high school or in the middle school, that, you know, can just start to, you know, pique someone's interest in technology in general?
Well, of course, there's Cybersecurity Club we have up at the high school in WMHS Tech Girls, but the tech integration classes, actually, are really hard to find if you actually look on the program of studies. And I feel like it's just one of the most under-recognized classes, because we help teachers with tickets, we do our own independent projects, and it's kind of like, really, an introduction without being an introductory course, because we get to work with hardware, software, we get to study viruses, and we got to work with social engineering, which was one of the, like, topics really explored at the hacking place, because, like, we couldn't touch the other team's equipment, but that didn't mean we couldn't make them sabotage their own equipment, which was done multiple times, and we got in trouble for it. Yeah, that was fun, but, you know...
It's a good kind of trouble.
Yeah, and either, even with the AP Computer Science, Computer Science Introduction to Programming, it's just a really good class to take, and like, like we said, there's something really talking about how we shouldn't be teaching coding in colleges, and that we should just start at the high school level, because it would become like a necessary skill, because there's so much need for the STEM jobs.
Because, I mean, we don't have a Girls Who Code program in our school.
No, basically, last year, I started, I looked into Girls Who Code, and there was a problem, because anything we developed through the Girls Who Code program belonged to the Girls Who Code, okay? And we didn't want that type of, you know, handcuffs. So I started the Wakefield High School Tech Girls, and we were able to follow the same curriculum as the Girls Who Code, but I only had a handful of, not even a handful, I had like three or four girls who came. So I decided this year to do the Cybersecurity Club and the Tech Girls together, and I challenged every boy who comes to recruit at least one girl to come too. So, you know, starting out a club is hard, because until you get a lot of interest, you know, you don't have that many joining. So I'm hoping that by us going to Argonne National Lab and kids seeing the opportunities behind the cybersecurity, that we'll get more interest in tech and STEM.
And there are also other great, other than Argonne National Laboratories, I've completed in the PICO Capture the Flag, which is an online competition that anyone can join, and basically, it's capture the flag with coding, and you're supposed to do a bunch of tasks, and that builds you points, and it was really fun, and I'm actually looking forward to MetroHacks 2017, which is in late May.
Yep.
And we signed up for that, so that should be really fun to go to. And there are tons of competitions like that, like MITRE, which is with Lincoln Labs, has a competition like that, that we were thinking of going to, but we did not sign up in time, because it was way earlier in the year.
It starts in the fall, so hopefully, I can do something next year with them. And that's great, because they're just down the street.
Mr. Markham.
Thank you. So Jocelyn, this is as exciting to, to listen to, as it is to, I'm sure, for you to explain, and it really truly is. So congratulations to you, and certainly to your mom and dad, and your brother, and your brother too. One of the things that struck me, the only thing that's probably more impressive than your description of what you had to do, was the authentic way in which you described it. I mean, you just extemporaneously walked through a litany of detail, which was tremendously impressive as a, as a public speaker. So I want to congratulate you. We hear, we hear lots of people that come in and talk and share ideas and share and pitch, you know, projects or that. So you really have a great, you know, high presentation manner and a speaking sense and a speaking presence, so congratulations with that. That's tremendously important and very, and very impressive. When Dr. Smith mentioned that you were a sophomore, that was even another, like, oh, wow, this is, so we have you around for two more years, is kind of what we're thinking, very selfishly so, right, Ms. Doran? But also, to Mrs. Doran, a really a thank you. I know this is the passion of yours. I know this is something you've been working on for your, for your lifetime, really, and then, you know, coming to the high school and making this come to life.
I'm living my dream.
You are living your dream. And this is, and it shows, just if Jocelyn is any indication of, and I'm sure she is, entirely representative, however small it is now, success breeds more success. And that's how something that's so important and so vibrant and so important, as you're talking about the careers of tomorrow, well, careers of today, never mind tomorrow. So it's a pretty, pretty exciting process. Congratulations and thank you, Patty, for everything that you're doing to bring this to life. And Jocelyn, you know, keep it up, we come back over and over again. This is very, very exciting, so congratulations to...
You know, just one more kudos to Jocelyn. She also is attending a writing workshop. I mean, she can speak, she can do computers, and she can write. It's...
What's the writing workshop? Yeah, it's the Young Writers Conference up at Champlin College. I, for English class, I, we had to do Passion... I, we had to do passion blogs, and I was awful at writing before this year, but I started writing creatively, and it was a really, like, helpful outfit, outlet to do, because it, it made me think in like a nonlinear sense, which helps me do these puzzles.
Very cool.
Great school, man.
Yeah.
Ms. Morgan.
Jocelyn, to use some of your own words, I think you are enormously cool. Congratulations on everything you've done so far. You're super impressive. And Mrs. Dorn, thank you for your passion in this area. You make me want to join the club, so I think you just have to get out there and keep presenting how you're presenting. It's incredible.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I was just gonna say, problem solving and critical thinking skills will just take you so far in life, and we're all just really proud of you, so keep up the good work.
All right, thank you.
I'll just say, your, your passion is infectious, so if you just keep doing what you're doing, people are gonna follow you. So good for you. I echo everything that's been said. Thank you.
So, thank you both very much. I told Jocelyn she could go home and do her homework.
I'm sure it's done already.
So, so then, a nice segue would be, so where does it all begin? And, and it begins in early childhood education. I'd like to invite our next guests up, preschool and kindergarten teachers. We have with us Lori Sokol, Katie Frazier, Jennifer Glant, and Leanne Masiallo. And the reason that, I'd like to really thank Assistant Superintendent Doug Lyons for coordinating this visit today. I asked him, you know, a few weeks back, I said, you know, the district and the town and the community have really invested in early childhood in the last couple of years. It's almost hard to believe that the Doyle Early Childhood Center just opened two years ago, right? And then, really, this was our first, no, second complete full year of full day K, right? So, you know, we're really still in the, somewhat in the early stages, but we thought it was important to come back and report back to the school committee how things have been going. Mr. Lyons, put something in your package, just give you a little bit of detail about play-based learning, what it is, and our partnership with Leslie University. But I'll turn it over to the team to talk to us about play-based learning.
First of all, thank you for inviting us. We are extremely passionate about play. When Mr. Lyons asked us to come tonight, he originally had asked us to possibly bring children with us, and I said, "Our kids are five and six, 7:30, it's past their bedtime." But like Jocelyn, it, I wish we could have brought the kids, because they are the ones who sell this better than, than we could any day. So hopefully, through the few pictures that we brought, and we have a short video, you can see how wonderful this is and how much, how important this is to our kids.
And Jen, can I just interrupt for one moment, too?
Sure.
Could you each say what school you represent, because this really represents kindergartens across the district and pre-K?
Sure. So I'm Jennifer Glant, and I am a kindergarten teacher at the Doll Bear School.
Leanne Masiallo, kindergarten teacher at the Woodville.
Lori Sokol, I am a preschool teacher at the Doyle Early Childhood Center.
Katie Frazier, I'm a kindergarten teacher at Greenwood.
So first of all, Dr. Smith just started a little bit saying, basically, the reason that this kind of came about was because of the addition of the early learning center and all of us going to free full day K. And I'm sure all of you know, the academic rigor in kindergarten has changed tremendously since all of us, for sure, have been in kindergarten. These children work, you know, 60 minutes of reading a day, 45 to 60 minutes of writing a day, 60 minutes of math, then there's science and social studies and everything else on top of it. They have specialists, they have lunch, and the day's over. And one big piece that we were missing was the play. They, we had always had, for as long as I've been teaching, some what we called at the time, free play or free choice, where they just had Legos out, they had blocks out, and it was their time to socialize with their friends, most like an indoor recess. And we were doing that for some time, but as this academic rigor, you know, every year, kind of the minutes kept adding up, we were having a hard time meeting all of the Common Core standards and all of what the DESE says we need to do, but also, we needed to, we know what our children need and what our students need, and especially, we'll talk about a little, like, social-emotional. A lot of what they do in play is how they work out their problems, how they, how they solve things, how they figure things out, and that's, we were seeing there was like a lack of that. So I want to thank Dr. Smith and especially Mr. Lyons for partnering up with Leslie University. We work with a wonderful woman named Yvonne. Last year, some of, some of us were chosen to pilot this play-based program, and I was lucky enough to be one of the teachers. And once a month, a group of us, I think there was maybe eight last year, we would get together once a month, and we would listen to what play-based was and, you know, what we thought it was, you know, what, what Leslie Univers, University saw it as, and we would share our ideas, we would go back, try things out. The woman from Leslie would come and observe our centers, and she would give us, you know, feedback and, you know, tell us what, you know, what was working or what maybe needed to be tweaked, and then we would get back together and share out our ideas. And that went so well that we continued, and now all of the K teachers and preschool teachers are included, and so it's going on throughout the district. So it's something, again, like I said, we're all very passionate about. I think that's about it for me. So Leanne is going to talk a little, or is it you?
If you want to read the quote, or do you want...
Play gives... I'm sorry. Play gives children a chance to practice what they're learning from good old Mr. Rogers.
And so, play-based learning, the way that it works is, we all have picked different themes, but there are choice centers, and they're based around like a specific theme that we've picked for a duration of time. So the way that the choice centers work is that they're each, like, a content area, so there's like a math choice, a literacy or reading choice, then there's like a science choice, a dramatic play choice, a block choice. And all the choices revolve around the theme that's chosen, so, for example, one of the themes that I did was like social justice, and had to do with Martin Luther King, and all the activities in that theme, it sort of reached all the content areas. So the kids, they love it, because they don't realize that they're learning through this, they're playing. So, and it's sort of student-driven, so the teacher creates the activities that the kids are doing, but they are sort of driving what they're learning, and they construct their own understanding of the concepts through collaborating with their peers or doing the tasks that they're given in each choice center. And it's also, the kids get to choose where they go. So we call it choice, because they get to pick which areas they want to go to, so there are specific kids that always want to be in the drama center, and then we have ways of sort of getting them to go out of their comfort zone and pick a different area on other days, but, you know, it's pretty much...
So young children learn about the world in a different way than an older child or an adult would. They really need to manipulate materials, they need to get engaged with all five senses. So, and that's exactly what play-based learning is, and that's what we have brought to this population who needs it.
So there are lots of benefits to play-based learning. As you can see here, social-emotional development, it builds self-confidence and self-esteem, it builds the language development, which is particularly beneficial to the English language learners, a lot of conflict resolution skills, risk-taking, it builds executive function skills, so you can see the whole list there. And more importantly, it goes, it all correlates with academic learning and correlates with the Common Core standards. So here are some examples that we've done in our classroom. So I did a unit on, based on the children's book, The Mitten by Jan Britt, it's a classic, and all these different animals, find a lost mitten and go inside, and at the end, the bear sneezes, and they all fall out. So the children here in this picture, they were choosing what animal they wanted to be, and they were looking at the book there, negotiating who want, choosing what they wanted to be, and who would go in the mitten first, and how it goes with the story. So as you can see, the standard is retell familiar stories. So one way I would assess that learning is to see how they're acting out in, within that area, and for an assessment, they would make their own mitten and put all the different animals inside. During their math center, using that same theme of the mitten, the children would measure different-sized mittens using unifix cubes. They really enjoyed doing that and comparing the different-sized mittens. In the block area, we did a social studies theme in the classroom, and we had recognized, that goes along with the standard, recognize national symbols and icons. We had the picture of the White House, Washington Monument, the Lincoln Memorial, and the children would problem-solve and count how many cylinders the Lincoln Memorial would need. And there's just so much going on when they were problem-solving, how to do each one, and math, and social studies, so there were a lot of different things going on in that area when they were doing that. So it was a lot of fun to do.
And we also have a similar activity at the preschool level, so I'm working with three and four-year-olds with and without disabilities, and it, it touches on so many different areas, from fine motor control and manipulation and balance, and pre-math skills with counting. We've given them pictures where they could try to replicate that, and this little guy is really working on a social-emotional standard, where he is maintaining focus and attention and completing a task, and very proud of himself. We also give them a variety of different pictures to try to copy, including at this time of year, we have pictures of their, the kindergartens that they might be going to. So they have the Woodville School, the other school. Actually, first, they do a blueprint, and one of the children, because we talk about have an idea first, and, you know, try to prompt them, and this was the Doll Bear School with the big windows, so you can, you can see that. So it's, play-based learning is really trying to take them and guide them in certain directions, like these little guys, they had the job of making a humpty-dumpty wall to see how hard they could make it and if you could balance. And I was trying to prompt them with questions, because then they, another thing, you can really expand all of them, they have a book that they love to look at about what they built. So in here, I have the pictures of what they built, and the stories they tell me about it. So, and, so they all, you know, it's incorporating the writing and the English language arts, as well as the building and the social-emotional. And I was trying to question them to expand their writing and say, "Well, how did you make your building longer? How did you make it taller?" Thinking that I was gonna get some concrete, you know, I put the bill, the blocks the long way or something, but they went to the social-emotional level and said, "We made it tall by teamwork." So...
That's very cool. You never know what you're gonna get back.
Yeah, that was, that was better than the answer I was trying to draw out.
Okay, so, one of the themes that I picked was Read Across America Day, also is Dr. Seuss's birthday, so we celebrated Dr. Seuss, and I also presented at Parent University, so these pictures are from, from that day. One of the centers was in science, we made Oublak, which was all the rage, everyone was trying to make Oublak, and I heard all the stores were out of glue. But that was, you know, a standard, talking about liquids and solids, and we just did it in a fun way. And we even took it a step further, and the kids chose objects around the room, and we hypothesized whether they thought the items would sink or float, and they had a ball with this. The, they, I sent the recipe home, and so the parents are still loving me for making Oublak. And then, the next picture, Colleen is, so this is kind of a STEM activity, this is, you know, something kind of, I guess, where it starts in kindergarten, with Jocelyn, not quite what Jocelyn was talking about, but it sort of starts in kindergarten. Colleen had just some red solo cups, she had some plates, and without me even really saying anything, I just had the, the book, Cat in the Hat, and without really giving her any direction, directions, she started building this, you know, crazy tall tower and making the Cat in the Hat's hat. Other children went there, and they just kept, you know, building small hats all around the room, you know, 20 or 30 hats, and she just kept going taller and taller, and, you know, they had fun talking about how high they could go, or, you know, how many they could make. So it was really cool. In social studies, these two girls used the globe, and then I had a few atlases, and they were writing. So, I mean, I'm saying that this is technically social studies, but this is social studies. It, it's writing, it's ELA, I mean, it hits so many different standards. Just the one that I picked happens to be Tell or Show What a Map or a Globe is. So we read All the Places You'll Go, and they made these cute little suitcases out of brown paper bags, and they got to choose where, if they could go anywhere in the whole world, where would they go, what would they bring with them, and, and what would they do once they got there. And they just had this cute little suitcase to take home and share with their families when they were done. It was just fun to, to hear about all these places that they would, would visit. And finally, in ELA, I used my block center to have the children retell stories. So we read numerous Dr. Seuss books over the whole month of March, and all I did was photocopy pictures, all the, the characters from Dr. Seuss books, and these boys were retelling stories, or some of them had fun making up their own stories with all the different characters in Dr. Seuss's books. And they have a ball doing things like that. So again, just like someone said, they don't know it, but they're learning, and they just think they're having fun, and this, this to them is just the coolest thing ever. And then the first question they ask when they walk in, it used to be like, "When snack?", and now it's, you know, "When's play-based? When do we get to go to centers?" So that's, that's all I know, it's, it gets the thumbs up from the kids.
And so I did two, like, themes around making a difference, making a difference in our world. So the first one was revolved around social justice, and I taught them about Martin Luther King and Rosa Parks. And then, it threw a lot of like read-alouds and direct instruction, and then all of those, the learning was put into these play-based centers. So one of them was like an art social studies center, and I have a bus that someone made. After they learned about Rosa Parks and the bus boycott, they were asked to make the bus before, and then now, what it looks like now. And this student actually went beyond and put in like facial expressions of how they were feeling. So like, just from this activity at the end of choice, there's a share time, and you can find something that someone was working on or they made and bring it up to the whole class and see what they were thinking about it. And just the facial expressions was like a conversation that went on within the classroom, why she chose to, before, to have like two lighter-skinned smiling, and then one upset, and we talked about how, back then, there were people who had lighter skin that were also upset with how things weren't going, and that things weren't being done fairly. And then, on this side, everyone's happy, and they're all in different places on the bus. So this was just one example, and then I had them reenact the Rosa Parks boycott in the drama center. So, and even like the boys wanted to be Rosa Parks, and it's really fun. So they loved, loved that center.
Yeah.
And then I had, for ELA, I put Martin Luther King Jr.'s, the letters in his name on blocks or Legos, and the kids tried to come up with as many words as they can using the letters in his name. So those were a few little centers. And then, to stem off of that, we went into environmental awareness. So, in writing, right now, we're doing persuasive opinion writing. The students are asked to state their opinion or choose a problem in the world or in their classroom, and say what they think about it, why it's a problem, and then come up with a solution for it. and then come up with a solution for it. So we did, we read the Lorax and then the students stated their opinion on what they would do if they were the Lorax in the story. And then we did the grocery bag project as one choice center. And I partnered with Stop &amp; Shop in Redding. They gave us grocery bags and the kids decorated them all with like environmental awareness messages based on like what they had learned about ways they could help their environment. And then the store used the bags to pack groceries. And they displayed the bags there at the store on Earth Day. And all the parents were like invited to shop. And they liked it because it helped with, you know, get everyone in there to shop. And but the kids loved it too. They got to go and they came in after the vacation and were talking about how they got to see their bags or how they got to see other students' bags at the grocery store. So, and it sort of like shows how they can make a difference in the actual world and apply what we're doing outside of the classroom. And then there is one other one that I put on here. And so this is a recycling choice. And it was in the math center because I had the kids recycle. We'll take a bunch of different recycling items and sort them. And then they had to chart them and make tally marks and then count one to one, how many were plastic, how many were metal and how many were paper. So this is after learning about all the different materials that you can recycle. So it goes along with the science and math. And I have like a small clip. It doesn't really show the best inquiry-based questions, but it does show the kids, I think it takes place after they've already sorted the recycling. And they come up with pieces that aren't recycling pieces. And then we have a like quick conversation, you'll see. Play the video. So what is trash? What is that? What is it called? Was that material probably? Not aluminum, it started with. Styrofoam, styrofoam camera, beer sign. So we put those things in the trash bag. Okay, now you have to keep your gloves on. You have to count how many papers, how many metal and how many plastic paper. And then mark. Here tally up our sorting sheets. And I'll put them up here. So yeah, I had them wear the gloves because just to reinforce that when they go home. Because a lot of the kids, when we started this whole unit of environmental awareness, they wanted to start picking up trash in the playground or outside. So we talked about how like it's not safe to pick up any trash. You have to be with an adult. You have to have like special tools. You have to be wearing special gloves so that the kids weren't going home and trying to pick these. So they actually came up with the idea too, to wear the gloves at the recycling center. So I got some gloves from our custodian. And that was like a hit because of the gloves, I think.
So as you can see, like, you know, I saw this video for the first time yesterday when we met to put this together. And right away, I was like, oh my gosh, I can't wait to go back and do this with, you know, my class. So that's, that's how it works. So when we have time and we get together once a month, you know, we work in professional learning communities and we share ideas and we talk about the inquiry, inquiry questions. And, and we get our best ideas from each other. I can definitely say that. Yeah, even today, we had PD. And a lot of us were saying like, what are you doing in play-based this week? And what did you do for this topic or whatever? So that's, you know, that's our exciting talk in kindergarten.
And I honestly have so many parents too, that have come to me and have said that the, how much their child has learned in the themes that we're doing that have to do with the play-based. Because kindergarten, they learn through experiences. And as much instruction we give them, direct instruction, they need to actually be doing what we're teaching them to really learn the content. This is just such a nice way where they're actually like able to do it and play and learn. And teachers are allowed to go around and ask questions and sort of gain understanding of where they are with the material. Like that boy that thought that was aluminum, so now I know. And that might be something that I could focus on next time we talk about recycling is making sure that the students know the different materials that were being used. So it's just a really nice.
And it does, I mean, not that I'm saying we, we make it look easy, but it does take a lot of time. And it takes a lot of money, a lot of, you know, our, our own money goes into this. But now that they're done, these units are done, you know, we have them and we, we have them forever. So, you know, I think, you know, that's probably the only negative part of this that we can come up with. But we love it. And we're, we're speaking for the, the whole kindergarten and preschool team. We're, we're on board as long as, as you let us do it, right? So we just wanted to end with one last quote by George Fanon Shaw. "We don't stop playing because we grow old, we grow old because we stop playing." Does anyone have any questions for us?
How could you do that and not have questions? It, it's funny, when we were, the whole discussion was happening about transitioning from the half-day to the full-day kindergarten. Some of the biggest concerns was that, you know, that the kids weren't getting an opportunity to play. And, you know, the, as much, as much as they, they had to meet these standards, they still needed to be kids. And this is just a, such a fantastic way of making sure they're getting play and fun and still meeting their standards.
Exactly. I'm glad that came through.
Really huge.
That's exactly what we tried.
But that was, that was a big part of the discussion at the time.
And it is something to, to see in, in person. So any of you are welcome definitely to my classroom if you'd like to see it. It really, I know Mr. Lyons.
I can totally identify with the doing.
Is to pop in and, and see the, the little ones. Because they're, they're really funny. And they're, they're so smart and they come up with these things and you're just amazed at, you know, some of the things that they know and come up with on their own.
I totally identify with the, you know, you have to do. So that's my learning style. I can't read about it. You can't tell me about it.
Right, hands-on. Yep, I'm the same way.
Then I get it, yeah.
So thank you. I was, Chris, Chris actually made the point I was going to make, which about, about the value of full-day kindergarten and the balance between the academic and the, and the play-based learning, which I think is so important and an affirmation of the investment that we've made as a community in that. The video reminded me a couple, I think it was my first or second year on the school committee, you know, we're invited to do the, the reading to the students. And I, and I went to a kindergarten classroom at the Woodville School. And I came away from that experience just with unbelievable admiration for kindergarten teachers. Because you just don't realize, you know, how hard it is just to, you're talking, you get 20, 15 to 20 individual little souls in that room at all different levels. And you've got, you've got to control the classroom. And it's, I really admire what you, what you do. It's incredible work. And one thing I just wanted to maybe get you guys to talk a little bit more about, and I think it's really important, is the physical element. Because I think one, one of the things that I think it's worth emphasizing in this is these kids need to move around, right? And play-based learning allows them to do that. They obviously have to read, they have to do mathematics, they have to sit down and, and concentrate at times. But the physical element of the play-based learning is really, really valuable. So maybe talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, definitely at the beginning of the year, it's very hard. You know, like the workshop model that, that we use in reading and writing. You know, it does require them to sit for an extended period of time. And it's so hard when they're coming from preschool. It's just, it is hard. So this is perfect. This is, you know, it allows them to be up and moving around. You know, dramatic play is such a big hit. So they're, they're up and, and building in the blocks or the Lego table. But there are some kids who like to sit and work and write and read or have quiet time. And it, what's nice about it is it's, it is a choice and they get to choose where they want to go. And like we said, some of them, if they're choosing the same center every day, you might want to, you know, kind of get them out of their comfort zone a little bit and give them a little push. But it is nice to, to get them up. And, and on top of this, we do, you know, try to get them outside for, you know, 10 minutes a day. And, you know, we still do the outside play. But that's obviously separate from, from what we're talking about here. Yeah, but yeah, that, that is a huge part of this.
Thanks.
So as the expression goes, right? How did everything that you need to learn, you've learned in kindergarten?
Yeah, absolutely.
And, you know, certainly what, what, what we knew about this from its, from its origins a couple of years ago, as, as the gentleman referenced. And from just hearing and seeing tonight, just continued to be blown away. They won the incredible work and the passion that you've put into it. You've put in extraordinary blood, sweat and tears and additional resources, personal time, personal resources. We cannot be, we cannot be more grateful for taking something that we as a community thought was so very important a couple of years ago and putting what, what we could into it. But you've obviously brought it all to life. And that is tremendously meaningful. And, and, and it will bear fruit for the rest of the school district, the rest of the grades and for these, for these kids. So it's just very cool stuff. I would love to, I don't know if it's something that we could arrange to go see them. You know, so I don't know how we pull that off, but I would love to do that. I'd love to come in and visit or maybe, maybe when next, you know, reading day or something. Whatever, maybe we could think about it. Because it would be, it would be something tremendously important to add some additional, you know, notoriety to our, our, within the community. Not that we bring that, but we could have some pictures taken and get it into the papers and, you know, generate a little buzz.
Kids love having guests.
About what extraordinary work is being done. So I really just want to thank you for the, for the energy that it's taken to bring it from really, really non-existent 36 months ago to it being so vibrant today. So thank you so much for that.
I echo what everybody just said. I think you guys do an awesome job. Something I just heard at the end of this that is a little bit concerning is that their own money is going into this.
I was going to say.
I would hope that. You did and I caught that, so thank you. But I, I mean, I hope we can do something to work on that so they don't have to do that.
And I, that was the comment I was going to make at the end. I heard that too. And please know, we will deadlines and I will get you anything and everything you need. It's incredibly generous, but we want to make sure we're providing you with what you need. So please make sure.
It's just in the beginning stages, so.
Well, thank you.
And I'll just add one comment before we say goodbye tonight, if you don't mind. I just, I think for all of the teachers that are here tonight, this is the epitome of what it means to inspire the love of learning, what we heard at Wakefield High School and at our early childhood.
And today was a half-day. Well, not for you guys, but still. It's a, it's a long day from starting at 7:30 this morning to 8:30 tonight.
Okay, so the next item I have on the agenda is the Learn Anywhere School Cancellation Project. I think we have a motion.
Yeah, we'll start with the motion.
Move the school committee approve the Learn Anywhere School Cancellation Project as presented.
So just some highlights. I gave you a lot of information in your packet. But this is about cancel school days and really moving away from the practice of adding those days at the end of school, the school calendar in June, which is not optimal for timely learning. We got, as you, I talked to you about several months ago, we have the approval of the Department of Education. And I had told you that I would come back. The only thing we need now is school committee approval to move forward. I just wanted some more details before we were able to do that. Hopefully I was able to provide you with those details in the packet. There's the introductory one that just talks about the, the project in general. And then the second piece was the frequently asked questions, which gives you a pretty good description. And then a series of examples of the kinds of assignments that teachers will be providing. And a lot of those are choice-based, passion-based projects and assignments. And then the last piece were the cancel school days roles and responsibilities. Just to give you a sense of that. And that piece included how we plan to audit the Learn Anywhere Cancellation Days to ensure that quality assignments are communicated to students and there's an end product and due date. And then that student performance is commensurate with a regular school day. So if you have any questions, I'll take them, otherwise.
I have a question about one of the, the questions number 10. How long will the total of all assignments take for students to complete? And I just want to understand a little bit how you came up with or where these numbers came from. Because there were like, where the K through 2 is approximately 60 minutes. And, you know, these great teachers were just in here telling us they are spending 60 minutes reading and however many minutes doing math. And it, it doesn't equate to a full school day to me?
Yeah, so that's one of the things that's sometimes hard to understand about like online classes or virtual classes. You have to kind of think beyond like the typical school day and that it's exactly like a typical school day. So if you looked at a couple of the examples of the assignments a kindergarten student might get, they may write an opinion piece, which may take them about 60 minutes at home with their parents or families or, you know, at some point. But they'll also be presenting them. They'll be, you know, sharing with classmates. So there's a lot of follow-up to the project. So there's what they're actually doing on that day. But the actual assignment takes, you know, more time overall from start to finish and all of the parts that are part of the project. Does that make sense?
It makes sense, but the day at home, approximately 60 minutes?
Right, well, meaning that K to 2, to say that we would, we're in school, they're in school for about six hours and 10 minutes or something like that. So to assign students at home, six hours and 10 minutes of work doesn't really feel appropriate. So we went through the developmental ages of the students and what we thought would be appropriate. So, you know, kind of going backward from the high school students who are doing approximately 30 minutes per subject area. So they have a pretty full slate of activities. Five through eight, cut that down a little bit. But we're mindful of the smallest children and the time that they need to, that they would be able to be, you know, work at home effectively.
So that makes sense. I wouldn't expect it to be a full six hours and 10 minutes on a snow day for a six-year-old. And I'll support this, but I just want to, I just want to make sure we have metrics in place to follow up with this next year to make sure it is having the impact that we're expecting.
Yeah, I think again, we're kind of comparing a quality, you know, reading or math or whatever it is that they're doing that day at home and the assignments. If you look through them, some, you know, some exciting ideas. And kind of really compared that to June 17th and kind of what we're able to accomplish like out of the connection of the curriculum and where we are with the unit, the essential questions and, you know, the, the kind of the meaning of what they'd be able to do during that, that time. So I kind of really equating that quality is not just quantity, but really quality, I guess.
Questions, Chris?
Just on, on that note, I, I think part of the time that they'd also be spending is like maybe researching their answer. So they'd have to be doing some reading to develop their opinion to then write the opinion. So I mean, that, that's, there's probably more time involved than, than just the writing. A thought that I had. Typically, we, you know, I, I know there's no typical, but how many days are we expecting a teacher to have like on the shelf, ready to go? Like five or what's your thought on that?
Right, so I think we're going to encourage everyone to have, plan for five. On an average year, we have two to three snow days. This year, we had four. And two years. This year, we had four, and two years ago, we had five. So, you know, so we do hit the four or five mark. But more on average, it can be, you know, say, three days. But we're going to ask teachers to really plan or think about five. Now, it depends if they're doing the short term or the end of the unit or the longer-term assignments, when they'll do the planning and how they'll do it. For those who are doing the short term, I think a huge piece of Learn Anywhere is that a lot of students are already working and the teachers on Google Classroom every day. They have their math, you know, curriculums online, their English Language Arts curriculum is now online. So it's really reasonable for them to just continue on, whether they're in the school building or not in the school building. So in those assignments, those will be more real-time, so the teachers will be preparing in advance only to a certain extent, but they will be, you know, their preparation will probably be more within the 24 or 48 hours in advance, where others might prep all, like, five articles they want students to read and comment on a blog over the summer before. So it's different times and places they could do that preparation.
What's me, it's all kind of like we expect them to have sub-plans ready.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, if they're unexpectedly sick, there's something for the children to do. And then just for the public to be clear, this, if by having this in place, when we do have a snow day, we're not tacking on to the end of the school year.
That's correct.
So that, I mean-
The last day of the school year that's on the calendar for next year is the last day of school.
And it would be, therefore, either would make it easier for people to plan.
Yeah.
You know, their time away, their vacations, or there's no, what their daycare needs to be and when, instead of having this moving target that we always seem to have.
Right, right.
Anyone else? Tom?
Thanks. So Dr. Smith, one of the things that I found most compelling when you first brought this up, you know, a handful of meetings ago, was truly being able to have some better experience at the time, meaning when the snow day would be, as opposed to the June 20th, which we all know is the king and queen of, you know, blow-off days. So that's what's most meaningful, and the fact that the Department of Ed seemed up for a trial run at this and the work that you put into it. I really liked reading through the rubric of the examples that you provided. And one of the things that I could say from my own kid's perspective in the snow days this year, that, so the snow days that they had this year, depending on the teacher, but most of the classes my two kids had, they had homework on snow days. It wasn't like there was no homework on snow days. So now there's a homework component to snow days, and now there's an added, additional work expected on the snow day. So I think that will mesh nicely, assuming that there's some relationship between what's going on in the classroom that week, the homework, and then what the at-home, at-home assignment might be. But I'm most compelled that, to insert more time when they're much more focused in the winter months than the end of June, and everyone's quite anxious to be done. And I, too, join Thomas Morgan in being concerned about making sure that we're on task and we're attentive to that. But that's what's most compelling to me, is the ability to insert better learning on time, in real time, than carrying some miscellaneous day into June.
Because the whole idea is that we can be timely. They're in the middle of curriculum, we heard the kindergarten teachers talking about being in a certain theme or a certain unit or a certain aspect of their learning, and we can continue on with that in real time. When you tack them on at the end, you know, if you've really done your job, you're pretty much, you know, done at that point. And so it's kind of filling time, and it's not meaningful time. And I think now that we have the digital tools for students to do a lot of their work virtually, there's really no need to do that any longer. And I think a lot of school districts are just figuring out how to do it, what to do, what's going to make sense and what's going to work. So the Department of Education asked if, when we get to this point and we're ready to begin rolling it out, they were very impressed with this product, and they are interested in us sharing with other districts what we're going to do.
Are we the only one doing it?
At this point, I don't know of anyone else that is actually at this point now where they're really ready to go. There's a lot of detail here that I think, I know that Burlington piloted something last year, but they ran into some difficulties with some areas that they hadn't really thought through, like support staff and, you know, some other kind of specifics at different content areas and grade levels and things. And so I've had some conversations with the folks there. So I know they're pretty close to ready to go. I'm not sure of anyone else at this point. I think Wayland was closing in as well.
I had one more question. Following up, I see the, it's not in front of my screen now, but the Learn Anywhere team seemed to be a well-represented group. I was just wondering what conversations either you or Mr. Lyons may have had with either the faculty in general, or, you know, where's the teaching staff with this, where's the buy-in, where's the appreciation for the-
Oh, thank you. So where we are right now is, we've been meeting with the various unions, the Teachers' Union, the Instructional Sports Staff Union, and really kind of talking through and vetting all of this. The Learn Anywhere team was working, you know, kind of on their own parallel course, the course of preparing. So everyone is aware and knows what's going on, but after tonight with the vote, if we are moving forward, the next step in the plan is I am sending out everything broadly to all of the teachers to digest, and then we're running a few Q and A sessions this spring. A number of teachers will want to go and get ready and start working over the summer. But we are planning on, Mr. Lyons and I will do a workshop on the September, I think it's September 6th. This is the second day that the teachers are back for professional development. And then on the October 6th Professional Development Day, we're going to give teachers some time during that professional day to work in groups and have some support around to really work and dive in on the projects. And we'll begin the communication plan more broadly. But everyone is aware, and they're just kind of standing by for this next step.
Work in progress.
So in terms of, and I apologize because I got this packet this morning and I didn't know we had a meeting until yesterday at 10:00 P.M.
We weren't expected to be at the meeting much before 8:30 after 8:00 P.M. anyways.
I didn't even know the meeting existed. The teachers are, they're not kind of on the clock, is what it says in here. So what does that mean?
This is so hard to wrap your head around unless you've worked with virtual schools. In other words, we run virtual high schools right now, courses at our high school. So a teacher isn't going to sit in one place for, you know, six straight hours. When you teach a virtual high school class, you will post your assignment, and you'll have different times you'll come on for, office hours. It doesn't have to be during the regular school day. It could be, I'll be on, you know, you can talk to your class ahead of time. What's best for teenagers, it might be from 6:00 to 8:00 P.M., you know. So I'll be on from 6:00 to 8:00 P.M. to give you some extra help and some support. During the school day, as you're working on your assignments, we use Google Docs. So students will be working on their projects, maybe either individually or in teams of two or four or something like that. The teacher can be monitoring kids' work and giving them feedback in real time throughout the day. They might, maybe they have their own kids, they take them out sledding in the backyard, and then they come back and work with kids for a little while. They might be working at, you know, at night. So the time is really quite flexible when you're working with a virtual class. The idea with virtual school in general is that there are clear assignments, benchmarks, standards, you know, time for collaboration, both face-to-face and virtually, and an end product that the student is going to be putting forward, and the teacher is assessing that end product. And it's really just, the teacher takes the role as a facilitator that we're, as they do in the classroom. They're facilitating the activities that the students are doing. So, like I say, it's more fluid than, you know, than a school day that starts at a certain time and ends at a certain time.
Right. And, I mean, and I understand, I understand that in, with respect to an actual class that runs, but we're talking about a day. So if a kindergartner is doing some things and then they don't know what to do next, then they can't complete their 60 minutes of whatever the expectation is if their teacher isn't sort of available to prompt them to move forward.
Well, that's one, so two things kind of occur to me. So just something to remember that middle school and high school teachers, 5 to 12, have multiple classes. So they have many students that they're interacting with. I'm a high school teacher, I have over 100 students I'm interacting with. I'm a middle school teacher, on my team, I have all of my different classes on my team. So, but the question you asked is, one of the main tenets of Learn Anywhere is that the assignment will not be due the day that the child returns. And that makes sure we facilitate both equity, so if for any reason the student doesn't have a device at home, or the family doesn't have the internet at home, or the internet goes down with a storm, or you have one device for multiple kids. But also for students with disabilities, ELLs, that require some support services or our littlest learners that may get stuck and maybe both of their parents go to work and they may not be there to help them or prompt them at home, the students can do the best they can, but there'll be a lot of follow-up help and support when the students get back from school. And many of that will happen, you know, before school, after school, and other times. And it may be that the parents will plan to connect with teachers in the evening. So they know that the parents are working, and they can have conversations either online or on the phone, you know, to give some of that necessary support at other times as well. Okay.
Great.
Yeah, okay.
I was just going to say, I think it's a great idea. One thing to kind of just be conscious of, I think families with maybe two, three, four kids, they might just have one home computer and maybe an iPad, too. So, you know, as long as there's some flexibility and just kind of being conscious that some kids just can't afford it or just don't have it, you know. But I think you answered my question where, you know, it's going to be spread out throughout the day, and it's going to be some flexibility, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So motion has been made and seconded. All in favor? Okay, passes unanimously.
And then the last thing on my agenda is my goals, and I won't go through every detail because there's a lot in here, but maybe just, sort of overall, one of the themes I hope you really picked up is the idea of using data from student growth measures, particularly around the professional learning community model and how those functions to meet the individual needs of students and to do real-time adjustment and instruction. That's kind of a theme that you see a bit throughout. But on the professional practice goal, it's really around monitoring and supporting the development of our PLC teams across schools and working with our principals to ensure that we're doing the very specific collaborative practice that directly impacts student learning outcomes. And that's the first professional practice goal. For the student learning goal, I plan to continue on the writing goal that we started last year. And the district goals are aligned with the strategy, so hopefully you get a chance to read through those. But you also see, again, a lot of the, under the individualized student learning, again, the targeted student growth measures is part of that as well. And then on the standards, when I met with the Labor Subcommittee, we spent some time, you know, really thinking about some of the elements that we wanted to pull out from the standards to really focus on. Again, you'll see the data ones, the adjustment to practice and knowledge and use of data. But two really great conversations I thought we had, Mr. Cero and Mr. Massey were there. We talked about community and business engagement and how we can kind of really pick that up and do some work around that. And that was, that was pretty exciting. And then another one, you know, that I think is really important, the fiscal systems. I think we just talked about, at that meeting, and since that meeting, we've talked a lot about the budget process, how we can really improve that, and then also the facilities plans and throughout the year. So those are some of the items that we picked out that we thought were important. So I think on this one, we wanted to introduce it and then leave it on the table for a couple of weeks, I believe.
Until the next meeting, yeah. Until that end, we do have a motion.
Move the school committee lay on the table superintendent's goals for a period of two weeks for consideration at the May 9, 2017 school committee meeting.
Second. Any questions or discussion? Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Okay. Dr. Smith, do you have anything under other?
I do not.
Okay. And with that, Mr. Piffling.
This evening, we have a few gifts, and the first one is a gift that I would ask for an approval from the school committee to accept from Tim Gallagher, who is a parent of a Wakefield Memorial High School student and a member of our community. He is donating some computer equipment, some camera equipment, and some video camera equipment. The value of this donation is $1,095.
Callahan, not Gallagher.
I said Callahan, didn't I? Is it Gallagher?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Tim Callahan. I'm sorry.
I hope the chair is on the right page.
You are, I'm not, sorry.
Well, it'll be in the motion. I move the school committee accept with gratitude a donation of technology equipment valued at $1,095 from Wakefield Memorial High School parent, Tim Callahan.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. Questions?
I know that in the past, a big concern has been, equipment comes in as a gift that's not consistent with what we own, and it's hard for the tech department to support it.
So the tech department did go through this equipment before it arrived or when it arrived, before we made it a donation, to identify that it was usable to our programs. And I understand sometimes corporations will donate laptops or desktops that are five years old that are certainly beyond the standards that we'd be using in our schools.
Or a different brand than we have, or whatever those cases may be. It was just, you know, it was, we had some donations that became impossible to maintain at one point in time. I want to be sure that that wasn't the case here.
From what I understand, Mr. Martin went through the equipment that was delivered and inspected it and identified that it would be certainly beneficial to our district.
And Mike and I have worked with the PTOs at every school to talk about just that, that we should vet every idea for a gift, you know, kind of through that lens. So if it's technology, Mr. Weiner looks at it, if it's-
If there's musical instruments, it'll go through Mr. Banker. If it's athletic equipment, it'll go through Mr. Kent.
Kent.
Kent, thank you. I'm having a hard time with names tonight.
But, you know, that we really look, if it's curriculum, it goes through Mr. Lyons, you know, anything, so that we make sure, you know, it's something, like you say, we can support, but also that we're going to be about equity across our schools and things like that.
And even from the next donation, it's a donation, if they earmarked it towards something, and the principal really didn't think that was an appropriate use, then it would be gone through by the principal before it got to us. So every step of the way, there are checks and balances to make sure that the donations are within the needs of the Wakefield Public Schools and appropriate for the Wakefield Public Schools.
Thank you.
Anything else on this one? All in favor? Passes unanimously.
The next recommendation I would make is that the school committee accept with gratitude. There's going to be a change on this one, Mr. Markham. The donation is actually from the State Street Foundation. The original gift was made from Bhushan Kulkarni. This is a matching gift from his corporation. So State Street Foundation is making the gift of $100. It's a match to the original gift.
Okay. Move the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of $100 to the Greenwood School Technology Program as part of the, from, rather, the State Street Matching Gift Program.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. Anything on this one? All in favor?
And the final gift is a gift from our own Wakefield Academy, and this is, I recommend that the school committee accept with gratitude a gift of $1,109.76 from the Wakefield Academy, and this is for their support of the Parent University Program.
Move the school committee accept with gratitude a donation of $1,109.76 from the Wakefield Academy for the Parent University Program.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Anything?
I have a question on that. Could you, so could you help us understand, one, how the Wakefield Academy can make a donation? So I want to appreciate that a little bit.
I really think we're-
And why, what is the specificity around the number? It's obviously a number that's driven by precision.
I believe that Mr. Boyd, in the planning with Dr. Smith, identified some of the things that the Wakefield Academy could fund as part of Parent University, but they also paid some staff members who watched the children during the day, and that goes into that donation that they paid. It was outside of their program. We didn't charge families to bring their children in for that day. So his staff came in and worked, and some of his staff.
Okay, so this is effectively to reimburse the district for Wakefield Academy staff who worked at Parent University.
Correct.
So almost likened, these are my words, not yours, so if they're wrong, please say so. These are almost likened to a booster organization that is making a quote-unquote donation to offset the costs of coaching and such?
I think it was just to give recognition to the Wakefield Academy for their part in Parent University. I think this has happened-
But that's what the expense is related to, the compensation of academy staff who worked the event?
Yes, but they were compensated regardless of whether you accepted the donation or not.
Fair enough. Gotcha. Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All in favor? Passes unanimously. All right. Subcommittee reports, financing facilities. Mr. Markham.
We have not met since the last School Committee meeting, but certainly pleased to report that the superintendent, the business administrator, had done an outstanding job at the finance of our committee meeting. That has occurred since our last meeting. And also pleased to report, we got a strong vote of support from the Finance Committee. Not a unanimous vote of support, but it was understandable. But nonetheless, a, a strong vote, so congratulations to Dr. Smith and Mr. Piffling, and the, and the, and the thank you to the Finance Committee for, for appreciating the, the work that the administration had done, as well as the work of, of, of this committee. The next thing that's happening, of course, is Monday night at a town meeting. So we certainly want to have all hands on deck and do the best we can to represent the needs of the school district next Monday night.
Okay. Okay, we'll skip Labor and Personnel, we haven't met. Policy and Planning, Ms. Morgan.
Yeah.
Okey-dokey. Yeah, Greg. Please.
Mostly because I don't want to forget, if I could request that I come to your next Policy and Planning Subcommittee and, and provide you with more detail on the meeting that Dr. Smith and I had with the Charter Review Commission for that Subcommittee to consider and bring back. Remember, we had this conversation about bringing back to the School Committee some possible recommendations for the Charter Review Commission vis-à-vis the schools. So one outstanding issue for my time in chair, I just didn't want to lose, so thank you.
Great. Okay. Future dates and agenda items, our next meeting's May 9th. That will be with our Metco families. And town meeting, as Mr. Markham said, May 1st. School Committee comments, Mr. Callahan.
I just would like to thank the voters of Wakefield for returning me to the School Committee for another term. I'm, you know, very grateful for their, all their support, and I will do my best to live up to their expectations.
Mr. Liakos.
Thanks, Rob. I just want to congratulate Chris on his reelection to welcome Ann to her first School Committee meeting. Look forward to working with you both in the next year. And to, to congratulate Rob and Tom as our new Chair and Vice Chair, and look forward to working with you both over the next year or so. And I guess my time is up.
Ms. Fortier.
You're awfully strict with this meeting.
Clock struck nine. Ms. Fortier.
I, I also want to thank the voters of Wakefield for allowing me the opportunity to serve the schools of our community, and I am excited that the campaign portion is over and that I can actually get down to doing the work that I'm looking forward to. So glad, glad to be here.
Mr. Massey.
I just want to congratulate Chris and Ann. Chris, glad to have you back. Ann, welcome aboard. Feel free to reach out to any one of us at any time. I'm sure I speak for everyone on that. Be happy to help.
Thank you. I'd just like to congratulate all the successful candidates from yesterday in all the races, and thank everybody through who else, everybody who threw their hats in the ring. There were a lot of good candidates all across the board this cycle, and congratulations to Mr. Markham and Mr. Tero.
Mr. Markham.
Thank you. I, too, just want to say what everyone did in congratulating Chris and Ann. Welcome, welcoming Chris back and Ann on board, looking forward to a, a, a meaningful and important couple of years. Also, I would like to just add, I guess, another piece of thanks and appreciation to Ann Dany. I know we sort of did that the last time, but she's now actually officially a former member, and her time here was, was well-earned and well-spent, and we're certainly going to miss, miss her, you know, around the table, keeping us, keeping us focused in so many important things about students. Want to congratulate Ms. Tero on your, on your championship. Wish you nothing but the best. The success of, of any, of any chair is entirely reflective on the success of the committee and the success of the district, and wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you.
Also, I want to thank Ms. Liakos for what has been a very successful year, a very busy year. We did a lot. A lot of good things happened in the Wakefield schools, and you've, you've set up, you've teed up a lot of, of other good things. So that, there's a lot of work that goes into it, so I, and I appreciate that, and I'm sure that the committee does as well. On a, I guess, on a, on a community note, if I may be indulged, would like to encourage anyone that enjoys from time to time the opportunity to support the Interfaith Food Pantry. There is a food drive occurring this Saturday morning from 9:00 to 11:00. It's actually being run by the Boy Scouts. You know, I have a, a bit of an affection there for local scouting, but nonetheless, the Boy Scouts are doing their community service project this spring, and doing several volunteer hours and running a food, and a canned goods drive. So I know there, there are many people throughout the year that sometimes don't know how to go about making a donation or contribution, so anyone that is so inclined, please feel free to make your contribution this Saturday from 9:00 to 11:00 at the Interfaith Food Pantry. Thank you.
Great. All right, let's see. Thanks to Greg. Congratulations, welcome back to Chris. Congratulations, welcome to Ann. Congratulations, Tom, and thank you to all of you. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn the Wakefield School Committee meeting of April 25th, 26th.
Second. Motion's made and seconded, all in favor? Thank you, everyone.